All right, I will make a motion to open the Owensville Town Council meeting on August the 5th, 2025 at 6:30 PM.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
If y'all would please stand, face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder, this meeting is being recorded. Anyone who speaks is given permission to be recorded and posted to our YouTube channel and the town website. Virtual participation is not monitored, so you can watch the meeting, but if you need or want to speak, it must be in person. If you guys would take a look at the meeting minutes from July 1st. Second. If there are no questions or concerns about the meeting minutes, I will make a motion to approve the Owensville Town Council meeting minutes from July 1st, 2025.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Town claims. Yeah, it's a thick one. She's got all the payroll at the back. Roger, did you get a copy of the the statute for electric scooters and such?
I put a copy, one for you and one for Stephen in the box. Now Stephen might have gotten it.
Well.
It's just for you though.
Yeah, for the police officers in the board to look at.
I just wanted you to have a heads up since we're going to talk about that here in a little bit. You good? Okay. No questions or concerns, I will make a motion to approve the claims from the town from July the 2nd, 2025 through August 1st, 2025, in the amount of $248,699.84.
My second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Parking wrecks, board meeting, and their claims as well.
Vanessa, do you know who we would talk to about adding to the website? Parks and Board? Park and Recreation?
They have been talking to pay girls about him creating a tab on the town's website, and then making their page, yes.
If there are any questions or concerns, I'll make a motion to approve the parking recreation board meeting minutes from Tuesday, June the 24th, 2025.
My second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
All right, if there are any questions or concerns, I'll make a motion to approve the claims from the parking recreation board in the amount of $10,135.86 for the month of July.
My second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
The one adjustment, this is due to the work done at the Wildler property. The extra water was used for the new grass caused by the digging that the town done on the property, to get it back to the state that it was in. You need a motion on this one. Make a motion to approve the new bill of $62.17 for Jack Walter.
My second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, this is the tree over on Water Tower Road, that maple?
Yes, that I love with him's on.
All right.
I just wanted to make sure it was in the meeting minutes.
Make a motion for Krainy Tree Service to remove the maple tree at 604 Water Tower Road in Owensville for the amount of $3,400.
My second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
That is with stump grinding also. All right. No Rick today? Rick on vacation?
Yeah, I'll say, yeah, I'll say. Thirty-four hundred dollars.
That's not checked. They did stump grinding on that, correct? They did grind the stump on that?
They have not, they have not done it.
Oh, they haven't done it yet?
They haven't done it yet.
There's two prices there.
Are they planning on? Oh, okay, so price with, price, yeah, so the price without the stump grinding is 28, 28.50.
Price is at the top.
What?
Price is at the top, right?
Yes, the price at the top is the one with stump grinding. Okay. All right. Billy, you got anything?
Not particularly. Although we have been back in contact with WSP with the state. They finally contacted Josh over the projects for the highway. They wanted a cost estimate for relocation, which they don't.
Please, please elaborate. You're fine where you are.
So Sandra Jones with WSP reached out probably about two weeks ago. The town has reimbursable, they want a cost estimate for planning. What you have is what we provided them. And that's kind of, I think, worst case, you know, without discussing where the other utility is going to go. You know, what are their latest and greatest plans? You know, if they've, if WSP and NDOT has changed anything. So based on the information we have last week, last Monday, I believe, Rick, Billy and myself sat down, went through the plans. Again, to make sure we got all these for what needs to be relocated, what needs to be, or what can stay in place. So that's what they have, or that's what WSP has now. She said that they were working on a preliminary services agreement. I know when you get reimbursement and uh, there's some paperwork that needs to be done. So that should be coming out soon. Been a lot more responsive the last couple of weeks than the last five months, so four months waiting.
Getting down to the nitty gritty is why.
But they, they're moving on it. It appears that, they haven't said how far it's been kicked down the road, but I know originally they wanted work plans in October, so my best guess is it's probably been kicked down about six miles. Like pushback. But they're moving on it. And you are reimbursed, so that's good.
Mike, do we have to pay this all upfront and then they reimburse us?
I don't know.
Cause you're talking almost a million dollars.
Yeah, and I, I think the, there's different options when they, when you get into construction. If they do the work themselves, which a lot of those relocations have, it's probably easier if they do it while they have everything dug out and roads closed down and take care of that for you. Eliminates some of these costs if they do it.
Right.
While they're doing that. I don't know, if they're doing the construction, they're probably not charging you and then reimbursing you.
Right.
But it could, I don't think so. The non-construction costs that the survey, the design, the easements, or not easements, sorry. Survey, design, environmental, any kind of permits, and then also some construction admin and RPR. If you do have NDOTs contract to do the work, I would recommend that you have somebody out there at least spot checking that they're doing it the way you, putting stuff back the way you want it to be.
Right.
Installing things to your standards, so that, that's 180,000 of it. At this level of planning, our non-construction costs are usually tied to the construction costs, just 25% as we get into design and, or as we kind of whittle it down. Those costs probably go down a bit too. And that would probably be what
That would be what would be.
You would have to pay and give reimbursement.
Gotcha.
But we just heard back from her, you know, two weeks ago, so I'm sure there's a lot more information coming on that. And then your water main extension on the west side of town. I went out there with Billy a couple of weeks ago, kind of looked at the site. There are two things that I wanted to get a little bit more information on before we dive into it, just so it doesn't turn into something way bigger than you guys want to pay for without knowing what that might be. One of them was the right-of-way. Talked to the county, there is documented 30 feet of right-of-way. Doesn't sound like much, but that road's only about 10 or 12 feet, it's pretty narrow, lane and a half. So you should have a few feet on either side of the road to work with, but it looks like that could be enough to, to get it in there and not cause any problems. Not have to get any other easements. The other thing was environmental, because it is going underneath a pretty deep ditch. Making sure that wasn't a wetland or a waterway that required a permit. It appears the only thing that might might need a permit for is a local floodplain permit. And I'm going to talk to the Gibson County Floodplain Administrator, Stephanie McKinnon, I believe, tomorrow. I'll give her a call and see if she even wants anything done with it. It's not really on the floodplain, but it's on the fringe. And that goes to the local jurisdiction for for what they want to do with it. So I'll talk to her, make sure there's nothing crazy, and then we'll, we'll get going. I just want to make sure before we got into it that, you know, you had right-of-way, you didn't need easements, because that's something that could, you know, blow the, the project cost out, and then also environmental permits. It is, some of these environmental permits are probably five, $10,000, as much if not more than our, our design for this. So I just want to make sure we got those addressed, we have been working on it. Just want to make sure that there weren't any surprises before we got going. But here in the next week or so, we'll get started on it and get some service. Get something put out, shouldn't take very long.
Good deal, thank you. Any, any questions? Thank you very much. All right, Roger.
Just read that electric scooter, bicycle, it looks to me like the state's kind of covering any issues.
Yeah, here, here's the thing with the e-scooters, it has to be less than 100 pounds, three or fewer wheels, and it has to be a max speed of 20 miles per hour. If it's not that, it can be considered a moped, and then it's under, and then it can be require licensing and permits and things like that, and require insurance and stuff, from what I'm reading. I'm still looking into it. But I know these electric scooters go faster than 20 miles an hour.
Well, that's one electric bicycle, I think I stopped that time, it was over 30.
Yeah, yeah, so in order to be an e-scooter, it has to be certain things. I'm still looking into, because it says if it doesn't fit that, then it's not an e-scooter. So then it can be classified as a moped, so.
I mean, I, I don't have any problems, I don't, I mean.
You don't? Fort Branch has a big problem, so I just thought I'd give you the information in case you were.
We really don't have a huge issue with them.
Okay.
But if we do, we don't get on them often, and then they start going.
Fort Branch has a bad issue with it, and Hot Stop does too.
So excuse my ignorance, but the moped, you have to be a licensed driver to operate a moped?
According to the statute, you have to have it.
Yeah, you have to either be a licensed, or you have to go get a moped endorsement, basically.
He has the statutes, and I ID them over to you. I just thought it would be, I was doing it for Fort Branch, so I figured I would give it to you guys.
And they have to have a license.
Is that still, is that, is that still over the 50 cc?
Yeah, anything over 50 cc.
Yeah. So I was just doing it for Fort Branch, I thought you guys might be interested in it.
I mean, you have to go to, you can have to be plated, you have to get basically a, like a driver's license, motorcycle endorsement, moped endorsement.
Motorcycle endorsement.
And the reason for that is, you take some kid out here that has no valid ID, no plate, no nothing, he's landing on a highway unconscious. How do you know who he is?
Or he's at the grocery store and runs into your door, puts a big ding in your car.
Yeah.
Insurance.
But it's a good thing, I think they needed a long time ago for, for the safety factor of it.
Yeah.
Is that a thing on the Rock Road, Berg Street? Stephen's compiled a list here from last month. He's made you some copies here of this one. These are the street lines that he saw.
Can you make your pot bigger next time? Oh, okay, that makes sense.
No, I haven't watched that too, but I didn't do any list or anything. I did stop, that I can remember, on Rock Road, another one at 52 mile an hour. But that one was going out, instead of coming in like the last one did, but they were going out. I did move the radar sign down on North Main Street. So I'm kind of hoping that might help down there, I know it's down in both directions, so.
Need spike strips automatically pop up if you're going over certain speed.
Speed hump. That's what they call them in Chicago, speed humps. It's not a speed bump, it's a speed hump. About five foot wide and
Sounds like a good ramp to me.
Yeah, exactly, they, they got, yeah. It was for me, I didn't know what it was.
Hey Warren, you guys okay with soaking up this information for another month? Thank you for getting that to us.
I really didn't see any unreasonable, I mean, yeah, there's some theories on that, but.
We had one car that was causing the issue, but they no longer live here.
I mean, it's, it's like you said, they're not and there ain't nobody running 60 mile an hour down Main Street.
If they're doing it, they're, we're not fair to say it, but if we wouldn't install them, but. No, and I mean, I had, somebody shown me a vehicle, a car, obviously out down Main Street, but you gotta be able to, you don't have the driver, you know what I mean? You can tell who would watch that car, but now they're gone, so we don't have to worry about them coming through, they moved, so. If we were attempting to try to catch them doing that, put a package on more than one occasion, but.
On Rock Road, can I make a suggestion? The timing on Rock Road, and I hate to say this, but can we coincide it with shift changes in the morning? Like early in the morning? I mean, I'm not trying to get you guys out there in the morning, but I mean, I know that.
I'm going to be honest with you, most of your major speeding issues are rural in the morning.
Yeah. Trying to get to work.
Yeah. I was out early Saturday morning, or 5:00 AM, or Friday morning, and found several pull trucks.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that, kind of give you that.
Thanks.
Cause I know Rock Road, there, there's folks there saying it's probably shift change with Toyota, when the main traffic's down through there. Cause if you go down there right now, you might sit there three hours, I mean, I'll be a car coming through.
Yeah. Yeah. The morning people.
All the type of people that live on there, you're talking.
Yeah. Looks like it's, from the survey, it looks like people are doing pretty good, actually.
Yeah, from, from those, I mean, most people are. But it's just like anything, it only takes one or two to do something, people see that, and they have their votes going.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you guys. Vanessa?
I'll be gone all next week. I have a Clark Treasure Conference that I have to attend. And then in your packets, there is a water and sewer financial management report for the year 2024, Baker and Tilly. Have, I just received this from them. And then also I will have a, be having a video webinar this Thursday from one to four, and they're gonna go over everything with me, so. And then don't forget the public meeting on the 2026 budget is September 2nd, and then the adoption is September 16th. That's it.
That's it. Chief Wade, you got anything? Ms. Garrett? No? Cory? Matt?
I'm good.
Sandra?
No, I'm good.
I've, I've just got one thing to say. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the Owensville Town Council meeting, August 5th, 2025, at 7:02 PM.
I would like to say one thing. I'm sorry, I would like to say one thing. Not to, not, not to me, in the meeting is unofficial. Vanessa, I want to say thank you. We owe you a big thanks for everything for this like last weekend, the watermelon fest.
Thank you very much, but I did not do it by myself.
Well, it's, you, you did good, it was nice.
You're welcome.
My second to motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Right. A dog running around here somewhere?